Notice of Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville.
Thank you.
Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, June the 6th, 2006, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
Okay, welcome everyone. Can I have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge? And may I call Karen Alexandra Castillo and Vanessa Chavez to please do the honor of doing the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and the visible liberty and justice God. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one and invisible.
Alright, thank you very much. Can y'all please come up? Okay, can I please remain standing for the invocation? Can I ask Pastor Gregory Fish please come up?
Welcome Pastor.
The Word of God says in Psalm 95, "Come let us sing for joy to the Lord; let us shout aloud to the rock of our salvation." Verse 3, "For the Lord is a great God, the great King above all gods; in his hand are the depths of the earth, and the mountain peaks belong to him; the sea is his, for he made it; and his hands form the dry land." Let us pray. Our God in heaven, we know that you made the mountains and you made the valleys. You made the sea and you made the land. You made this great city of Brownsville and you sustain it in your hands. Now Lord, we pray for this meeting and for the elected officials of this city. We pray for the mayor and we want to pray for the men and women that make up this council, that all the proceedings of this meeting would go for the benefit of the people of Brownsville, that you would give and bestow wisdom to all the people who make decisions and that they would do what is always best for all the people. We want to pray especially now for the people that make up this great city and especially we want to pray for the children who are out on summer vacation. Lord, would you keep them safe this summer? Please allow this city to continue to be a peaceful place. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much Pastor Fish. Everyone please be seated. Okay, proclamations. We have Mrs. Filipa M. Rodriguez. Is she here? Commissioner Arroyo, is she here?
I don't know. Está aquí la señora Filipa Rodriguez? Okay, good.
Oh, pasale. No. Okay, I guess we can leave that for the next meeting. We'll move on to presentations. Amigos del Valle, Commissioner Camarillo.
Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, I sit on the Amigos del Valle Board. Just want to give a short presentation over some of the things that have occurred over the past year. First and foremost, it's been a year now since I've been with the Board. We meet once a month. We've met in Weslaco, Harlingen, and McAllen, and soon later this month in Brownsville. The Committee has representatives from Cameron and Hidalgo Counties. Over the past year, this Committee has had to make some major changes in order positively impact the residents of Amigos del Valle. We have been in a financial struggle for some time now, which has caused this Board to take swift action and correct our budget fallouts. Mayor Quintanilla Mercedes presides over the Board and has allowed this group to speak its mind on correcting the problems Amigos del Valle faces. Since then, some of the more drastic changes that have occurred is the appointment of a new director named Mr. Jaime Garza. He is serving as interim director until a new one is named by the Board. I will say that I am impressed with Mr. Garza because he has put words into action in a short amount of time. Most importantly though, he has taken the time to visit with the residents across the valley, which is essential. Last week, he and I met with the residents at Casa de Marra Number 1 to discuss an expansion to their facility. A partnership would be made between Casa de Marra Number 1 and Amigos. It was great to inform the residents that the city here is our concerns and we're working to make this a reality through the CDBG funds that have already been appropriated. This project will happen on my watch and I'm thankful for the Board's support, but also the city as it addresses this issue. We also have a new Chief Financial Officer who now provides us with documentation regarding financial reports on a monthly basis. You see there, you see before there were no statements presented to the Board, it was just dialogue. Times have changed and for the better. We also have our auditors and attorney present at meetings to ensure that we are legal and that we are moving in the right direction with the business of the Board. We're considering outsourcing transportation in the future as it is consuming quite a bit of our budget. We're also going to do what Amigos del Valle knows best and run a more efficient kitchen as provide meals to our residents across the valley. Because of issues raised by our residents, our staff has also been directed to evaluate and monitor the amount of starches that are served to our residents. They are also asked to keep food in its proper temperature and finally begin to follow state law, which requires commercial refrigerators and ice machines to be purchased when cooking food for many people. Our residents are important to us and we will ensure that they get the best that we can provide them. I look forward to working with the Board and look forward to continuing working with the Board on implementing and sustaining a better operations for our residents. And this concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Commissioner Camarillo, thank you very much for the presentation, not only to this Commission, but to the citizens of Brownsville. Employee of the Month, Mr. Kellner.
Mayor Protem and members of the Commission, please help me welcome our Employee of the Month for June, Mr. Carmen Muniz. Mr. Muniz has been with the city for 21 years and he'll be celebrating his 80th birthday in two weeks.
Alright, congratulations.
Obviously, he's an example and an inspiration to all of us. He works under the direction of Robert Esparta at our Traffic Department. He is a loyal employee, a dedicated employee, reports to work every day. He handles a variety of responsibilities, including repairing some of our traffic medias, etc. And we thought that we recognized him for his longevity on earth and his employment with the city by giving him the Employee of the Month for June. Of course, he's eligible for Employee of the Year at our banquet in December, and he gets a traditional cap, our pin, and our plaque.
Muchas felicidades, Mr. Muniz. Congratulations.
Y lo vamos a celebrar en 20 años más.
In 20 years more, sí. Si quiere decir unas palabras o...
I owe muchas gracias al director del Departamento de Trabajo y al pueblo de Brownsville por estar todavía hasta este momento y me han aguantado 21 años.
Muchas gracias ustedes por todo su servicio. Esparta? Do you want to make a few words? Come on.
Commissioner Mayor, Mr. Muniz has been with us where, when I first met him, it was 21 years ago. And when I first saw him, I said, "Well, I don't know, I'll give you a try, but hey, I did the right choice. He was good for the city. He's a very dedicated worker. He's 80 years old. It's hard to believe that, but you know, he is up there, but he does his work like he was very young still."
So, we're blessed to have him.
Yes, we are. And he's done very well for the city of Brownsville and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Stella, Consent Agenda.
Item number three, Consent Agenda Items A through C.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez and a second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And four, boards and commission appointments.
Item number four, Consideration in Action to Appoint One Member to the Graffiti Advisory Committee.
Commissioner Camarillo.
I believe we were, now that Commissioner Atkinson has been elected, we need his appointment to the Board, to the Committee.
Commissioner Atkinson, you have an appointment?
Yes, I do. Looking long and hard and I found a guy who I think is going to do a great job. If you could stand up real quick, his name's Santiago Jimmy Mandrique. He's an investigator for Brownsville Police Department. He's done wonderful things during his career as a police officer. Want to mention a few things. He's been, actually, he's a sergeant right now with the Brownsville PD. He's been involved with kids' sports. He's done some, he's been on some boards, Cameron County Child Advocacy Centers, Monica and Maggie's House. He's a part of CASA, court-appointed special advocate. FOW, which is the Friendship of Women, Family Violence Task Force, Healthcare Committee, and he's pending an appointment to the Brownsville Mr. Amigo Association. He's concerned about our city. He wants what's best for our city and when I talked to him, he was more than willing to step up and offer Brownsville a different way of thinking. If you want to say a couple of words, you're more than welcome to come up.
I guess that's a perfect example that we don't have to always look outside. We can find someone within. I think it's an excellent choice.
I appreciate the consideration, Commissioner Atkinson and the Commission. I welcome the opportunity to serve and expand my horizon, not just as a police officer, but as a member of the community. I've been here for 15 years now and I don't see myself leaving anywhere else. I love this community. I do my best within the police department to help as many people as I can. I think we're opening the door here to a problem that has been longstanding in the city, but we, and like I told Commissioner Atkinson, actions are better than words and this is a first step. This is a great step for our city to start to eradicate graffiti on the walls. I believe we already have some people that are doing that. Skip Keller has done a wonderful job in getting rid of graffiti in the parks and I think we need to expand that to some of our buildings in the city. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson and a second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay, motion carries. We'll get you some more work.
Thank you, sir.
Item five, Consideration in Action to Appoint Two Members to the Transit Advisory Committee.
Ms. Amora or Bellinan?
Good evening. My name is Rodney Gomez. I'm the Assistant Director of Bus. Norma couldn't be here and she sends her regrets. We have two vacancies in the Transit Advisory Committee, which I believe we're going to be filled by Commissioner Longoria and Atkinson if they're available.
Do y'all have any appointments, Commissioners?
Yes, I have Mr. Julian Lopez.
Julian Lopez?
I'll get you the information to your office.
Okay. Commissioner Atkinson? Oh, well, Jim, can we do both?
There he is.
Can we appoint them both?
Mr. Will Elephons?
At the same time or do they have to be individually?
I think the appointments can be done at the same time. It's just as long as you just motion for them both separately, then you can vote on it at the same time.
Okay. Julian Lopez is Commissioner, Longoria's appointee, and Commissioner Atkinson?
I got one, but I forgot her last name.
So, you want to get back with her?
Viola. Y'all might know her, Chief of Police. I don't know if you, I mean, he's not here, right? What's her last name? I got her resume and everything and I thought it'd have it here, but it doesn't have it here.
I don't know if we can put it on record without them.
What's her last name?
Well, we can...
Call her Viola X for tonight. She works for BSD, she's worked for...
We'll be happy to have her.
Commissioner, if you give me her, if you give me her last name, I will go ahead and include it in the minutes.
Okay, then we have a motion for...
I'll get your last name as soon as you get on.
We have a motion for Julian Lopez by Commissioner Longoria and Viola X by Commissioner Atkinson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Public hearings, Stella?
One more. Consideration...
Oh, I'm sorry, we got, yeah.
Item number six, Consideration in Action to Appoint or Reappoint Eight Members to the Heritage Council.
Mr. Goodman, gentlemen.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Fantastic duel.
Well, good evening. For the record, my name is Joe Gavito. I'm the Heritage Officer for the City of Brownsville. The reason we're here and maybe for the new Commissioner that's on board, I'm going to repeat some of the process that we go through to nominate the Heritage Council. And by ordinance, we have an architect and an alternate, and an architectural historian and his alternate, a planner and the alternate, and a banker and alternate that have, their terms have expired. And we've contacted all of them and they're willing to re-serve...
They want to get reappointed?
Be appointed, so...
I'd like to make the motion to, for them to re-serve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo to reappoint all eight members.
All eight.
And a second by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
And provide Stella with a copy of the list of the roster so she can attach that to the minutes. Yeah? Okay, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we can do public hearings, item seven.
Public hearings, item number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading of Ordinance Number 2006-933-LL, amending the Civil Service Classification Plan as stated on Ordinance 933-KK.
Chief, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Chief Peters?
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, I'm here before you to try to increase the number of firefighters from 98 to 101. This will address the Kelly Days for EMS certification. It'll be a savings for next year's, it'll be a trade-off for next year's budget, basically. We'll be able to cut our overtime.
Increase the manpower by three positions?
Has the City Manager concurred on this?
The City Manager and Pete have concurred on it.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, a second by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Move to approve. Second. You didn't close?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Longoria, and then who's going to second on the...
Public hearing. We have a motion to close by Commissioner Longoria.
Can I second it?
And a second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now for action item, we had a motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez and a second by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number eight, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 2006-1200.133, Slade Act property southwest of US 281, annexing certain territory to the City of Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, and extending the boundary limits of said city so as to include such property within said city limits and granting to all inhabitants of such property all the rights and privileges of other citizens and binding said inhabitants by all the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of said city.
Mayor Protem, can we...
Items 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, are those related?
Yes, they are. And I was requested of the City.
So, we can read them to the record at one time?
Read the call and then what I'll do is I'll go over each map so you'll know what we're talking about.
Alright.
Item number nine, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2006-023, to rezone from Z Area District to F Area District Classification with a 033 non-apartment and a 051 tourist corridor overlay district, 72.34 acres more or less out of 200.34 acre tract known as the Santa De La Townsite of Barrela Gardens tract in share one of Espiritu Santo Grant near US 281 and FM 1421. Item number 10, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2006-024, to rezone from Dwelling Z Classification to General Retail F Classification with a 033 non-apartment and a 051 tourist corridor overlay district, 5.845 acres more or less out of 200.34 acre tract known as the Santa De La Townsite of Barrela Gardens tract in share one of Espiritu Santo Grant near US 281 and FM 1421. Item number 11, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2006-025, to rezone from Z Area District Classification from F Area District Classification with an 033 non-apartment and an 051 tourist corridor overlay district, 59.66 acres more or less out of 200.34 acre tract known as the Santa De La Townsite of Barrela Gardens tract in share one of Espiritu Santo Grant near US 281 and FM 1421. Item 12, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2006-026, to rezone from Dwelling Z Classification to General Retail F Classification with an 033 non-apartment and an 051 tourist corridor overlay district, 17.176 acres more or less out of 200.34 acre tract known as the Santa De La Townsite of Barrela Gardens tract in share one of Espiritu Santo Grant near US 281 and FM 1421.
Thank you.
Mr. Medina?
Yes. On our first public hearing, Mayor, is that we, as we had three other public hearings before to present to the public, this section of land here on this Rancho Sempatico, which is currently outside the city. This is our master plan that they would like to develop, which includes commercial areas, residential, and some park space. As you can see, this line is the City of Brownsville's limits. This part is inside the city, this is not. This is a voluntary annexation where the developer is requesting the city and we have held the proper public hearings in this chamber and tonight is our first reading of the first public hearing bringing in this property here into the city limits of Brownsville.
Okay.
It's a public hearing as well.
So, do we have to close each public hearing?
I would close it for this one and render action and then the next ones, we can do each one together.
Move to close?
Second.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, a second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Is that correct, Mr. Goza?
Yeah, I don't know, Jim. Can we do, can we?
Yes, sir. Or you can just have a public hearing for all four at the same time.
That's what I was thinking. Can we do them all?
You're all related to the same community group. It's the same...
Go ahead and describe all of them.
Same geography.
Is that okay, Commissioners?
Yes.
It's fine.
So, just to make it clear that the public hearing is being opened for all four of the items.
Items 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12?
Yes, sir.
All five items. Okay, let's do that. And then if we go to the second ordinance, 023, and you put the map for that ordinance, in this particular ordinance, we are proposing to rezone from a Dwelling Z Classification to a District F zoning classification. This is a property here shaded in red and this is Rancho Sempatico. You have, you have, really, right now, what this map is showing, it's not showing this section of land that's outside the city. Right now, we can only rezone this property because it's inside the City of Brownsville. But here's 1421 and this military highway. So, this is a property where we're rezoning from, or proposing to rezone from a Dwelling Z Classification to a Dwelling F. And if we proceed to ordinance 024. In this particular ordinance, you have the property here and here you have the city limits line here, but across the street, this US 281, 1421, this corner here, and this particular corner, it's from Dwelling Z Classification to a District F Classification. And keep in mind that all these properties here have a non-apartment overlay and a tourist corridor. Non-apartment is, of course, anybody buying a lot in this subdivision cannot build a duplex, cannot build apartments. And also, you have a tourist corridor which, in our zoning ordinance, provides for more control of signage, more control of landscaping. There's additional requirements that have to be met. This is an entrance to Brownsville and the developer here understands that, is cognizant of that, and wants to preserve their development. So, they want more greenery, more control of signage to enhance their development and also it would be good for the city because it's one of our entrances to the City of Brownsville. If we proceed to ordinance...
025.
025. In this particular map, what we're seeing is her development or the developer's property is actually crosses 281 and is along 1421 from Tumarki Road, 1421. And this particular piece of property, again, we're rezoning from a Dwelling Z Classification, which is large lots to District F Classification with, again, a non-apartment tourist corridor overlay as well on that. And we proceed to the map on 026. Which is the front part around the lots fronting 281. In this particular, here we're rezoning from a Dwelling Z Classification to a General Retail F. So, she would have some professional offices, some light commercial hopefully occurring in this strip of lots here along US 281. So, those are the development, the annexation, the proposed zoning that goes along with her proposed development that we discussed in the master plan approved by this Commission at the last City Commission meeting, so...
Okay, there's a public hearing for those five items?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo, a second by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item?
Make a motion to approve on first reading. Ordinance Number 2-2006-933-... I'm sorry. 2006-1200.133, 235-2006-023, 24, 25, and 26 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, a second by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 13.
Item 13, Public Hearing in Action on Amending the City of Brownsville, October 1, 2004 to September 30, 2005, Consolidated Plan to Include Economic Development Activities and Multifamily Housing Activities.
Mayor Protem, this is a requirement by HUD that we're required to amend our consolidated plan to fund Project Vida that will be coming to this Commission next City Commission meeting and also some multifamily projects. So, there's a process that we have to go through.
Okay, there's a public hearing.
Where are you going to pull this funding from?
This is from that particular year.
But existing awards, will they be diminished to fund this?
No.
Or do you have the reserves?
We have just recently released funds from HUD for these projects. And then the Project Vida, which is CDBG-funded activity, those are from projects that money that hasn't been spent on other activities.
And these didn't go before the Citizens Advisory Committee?
The Project Vida and all of this, we have to do this first and then we take it to the Advisory Committee for their review and funding. But if they're not in the plan itself, we can't even look at them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a public hearing.
Move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, okay. And action item?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, a second by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 14.
Item 14, Public Hearing in Action to Authorize Ms. Blanca Ramirez to Transfer Her Motor Cab License and Taxi on a 1996 Dodge Van from ABC Taxi to Red Top Taxi.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Chief Carlos Garcia was not able to make it tonight this evening, so... Okay, on this agenda item, Ms. Blanca Ramirez, she filed an application to transfer her motor cab license and her taxi from ABC Taxi Company to the Red Top Taxi Company. She'll be surrendering her old permit if it's approved and then we'll be reissuing a new permit for her.
Okay, there's a public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
So, move to close by Commissioner Longoria, a second by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This is action item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, a second by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commander. Action items, 15, Stella?
Hey, real quick, Ms. Manhattan, I got the last name. Her last name's Courier. Everybody knows there's Viola.
Viola Courier?
Courier.
Okay, thank you. Item 15, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2006-008-B, to amend Resolution Number 2006-008-A for the purpose of extending the term of the Downtown Revitalization Advisory Committee for a period of 12 months from the date of this amendment.
Commissioner Camarillo?
I'll let Mr. Gold in.
Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Commissioner Camarillo. Honorable Mayor...
Thank you, Commissioner Camarillo, uh, Honorable Mayor Protem, Honorable Commission, uh, just for the record, my name is Christopher Golden, I'm a planner with the, uh, planning office, and, uh, this item is to continue the downtown revitalization advisory committee. Back in January, um, back in January, the resolution, the first resolution, went ahead and put it for a time period of six months. Now, we're coming up on that six months, uh, sometime here in June, and we've got a lot of great people working on this, we've got a lot, a lot of motivated people working on this, and a lot of stuff is happening, there's been a lot of positive changes, so we want to continue that motivation, and, and, um, we've been meeting biweekly, we're gonna be meeting monthly, but we want to continue this through, this resolution would extend it for another year from this point of time, uh, bringing it forward, uh, till the following June of two thousand and seven, if this is approved.
Okay, this is action item?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item sixteen, I think you guys are up again.
Item sixteen, consideration and action on resolution two thousand and six dash zero zero nine dash B to amend resolution number two thousand and six dash zero zero nine dash A for the purpose of extending the term of the graffiti advisory committee for a period of twelve months from the date of this amendment.
Commissioner Camarillo?
Mayor, we basically, uh, pretty much the same thing, our six months have been, have been up, there's a lot of, uh, great work that's, that happened this past weekend with our graffiti advisory committee, we're looking forward to continue, continuing the work that the committee is in place to do, and now with the new appointee to the committee, uh, we'll hopefully, we'll continue to enhance that, so I'd like to extend it to at least twelve more months, ending the following year of June.
Okay, this is action item?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner, those are two excellent committees, I know you guys are, wish you the best of luck, you guys are really gonna make a change on that.
Appreciate it, I got some good people, so...
Item seventeen?
Item seventeen, consideration and action on resolution number two thousand and six dash zero thirty-nine to adopt the revised bylaws of the Brownsville Urban Systems Transit Advisory Committee.
Once again, good evening, Honorable Commissioners and Mayor Protem, uh, the Transit Advisory Committee voted in their April meeting to revise their bylaws slightly, in the, um, the packet that you all got, uh, we, we put in a copy of the constitution, it was just one, uh, one little clause under section three, uh, regarding the, uh, the term of the advisory committee members.
Okay, this is an action item?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eighteen?
Item eighteen, consideration and action on resolution number two thousand and six dash zero forty to rename and officially designate a portion of El Jardín Heights Road to Dr. Hugh Emerson Road, with said portion being those segments of the road located inside city limits between the intersections of FM eighteen forty-seven and FM five eleven.
Mr. Kabler?
Mayor Protem, members of the commission, uh, on March twenty-fourth, two thousand and six, uh, the Cameron County Commissioners Court passed a resolution to the Department of, uh, Transportation designating, uh, El Jardín Heights or, uh, thirty-two forty-eight, Highway thirty-two forty-eight, as, uh, Dr. Hugh Emerson Road, uh, their request is that we, uh, do the same for a portion of the street that's within the city, which is three-quarters of a mile west of FM, uh, five eleven.
Yep, okay, thank you, I'd like to make a brief comment, and, um, before I do, I'd like to recognize the Emerson family, and if they could please stand. You know, Dr. Hugh Emerson, he did a lot of good deeds in this community, a lot of good deeds that went unnoticed, you know, he did, he wasn't searching for the limelight, it was, uh, he was a behind-the-scenes type of guy, but a very great man, and, uh, I know, like, uh, for example, with veterans, um, he did a lot of their dentures, did a lot of, uh, work for them, and he didn't charge them at all because of, for their service to this country, so, with that said, I would like to, it would be an honor for me to make a motion to rename the street to Dr. Hugh Emerson Road.
Second.
And I, second by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, and may this, uh, serve as a long-life reminder to everyone of all his good deeds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Emerson, would you like to say something?
Did you wanna make a comment, Mr. Emerson? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Bonnie?
This is my baby sister Bonnie, uh, I'm here with, uh...
Want to state your name for the record, Mr. Emerson?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Protem, my name's Hugh Emerson Junior, I'm here with my lovely sister Bonnie, my son Arturito here who snuck in, uh, I have my, uh, my dad's wife Sylvia, Sylvia, will you please stand, Sylvia Emerson, uh, my daughter Maria Alicia Emerson, uh, my wife Lolita Cisneros Emerson, my father-in-law Sergio Cisneros, and dear family friends, Barb and Tucker, uh, Dr. Ramirez, uh, Nidia, and, and Sophia from the bank, and, uh, my dad would have been very, very pleased, very, very, uh, humbled at this gracious gesture by the city commission and by the county, and...
I'm sure he's watching us all.
He certainly is, and, uh, my, my brother Bud Forster and Sylvia, uh, Luke and Buck couldn't be here, but they also wanna thank you all, just as much as we wanna thank you all for your just lovely gracious gesture, I'm speechless, and Bonnie, would you like to say something?
I just, my father would be very, very honored, our whole family is very grateful. Thank you very much, it's a, it's a great honor.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to, uh, item nineteen?
Item nineteen, consideration and action to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the Governor's Division of Emergency Management fiscal year two thousand and six Emergency Management Performance Grant awarded to the Brownsville Office of Emergency Management in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Honorable Mayor Protem, commissioners, uh, this grant is, this is the sixth year that we've received this funding since I've been working here at the city, uh, the Emergency Management Performance Grant funds are made available through the Department of Homeland Security and the Office of Domestic Preparedness, and then sent down to the states, and then they decide how to divide that between the eligible jurisdictions within the state of Texas, the grant this year is in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, and it's basically to reimburse the emergency management office for administrative expenses.
Okay, this is an action item?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo, second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Moving on to purchases, contracts, uh, item twenty?
Item twenty, consideration and action to authorize the city of Brownsville Aviation Department to enter into a lease agreement with Hunt Pan Am for ten thousand square feet in Airport Building Sixteen.
Mr. Brown?
Mayor Protem, members of the commission, this is a short-term month-to-month lease for ten thousand square feet of building number sixteen, sixteen, which is part of the original NeoPlan complex structure, the lease allows Hunt Pan Am to continue operations while hangar number four is in the process of being demolished, and while funding is being sought to build a replacement hangar on the two new pad sites recently completed. Former hangar number four is leased to Hunt Pan Am, was for eleven thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents per year, the new site is ten thousand square feet and leases it fifteen cents per square foot for a total of eighteen thousand dollars per year, staff recommends approval.
So move?
Second.
This is an action item, a motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item twenty-one, consideration and action to authorize the city of Brownsville Aviation Department to enter into a lease agreement with Southmost Aviation for twelve thousand square feet in Airport Building Sixteen.
This is a companion lease, uh, to the Hunt Pan Am lease, as you recall, this building is also, the building they're currently leasing is in the process of being demolished by action of the city commission tonight, the site that it would be leased to, uh, Southmost Aviation would be leased, again, on a month-to-month basis, for a total of twelve thousand square feet, and the total value per year of that new lease is twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars, staff recommends approval.
This is an action item?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number twenty-two, consideration and action to authorize change order number three to the General Aviation Infrastructure Runway thirteen R and thirteen, and thirty-one L rehabilitation project.
Mr. Brown?
Mayor Protem, members of the commission, this, this is a closeout change order to the project, this project is funded, uh, ninety-five percent with FAA funds and five percent with PFC funds, or no city funds involved, uh, the project constructed two new hangar pad sites at the airport, complete with parking lots, all of the infrastructure to support, uh, two new hangars.
Is this just the change in design?
Pardon?
Is this just the change in design, or...
Actually, no, for example, uh, what, well, partly, uh, what took place, for example, the FAA had not determined, uh, at the start of construction, that they had a cable that ran from the tower over to the airfield during construction, that cable was located, uh, and had to be corrected as per FAA standards, the remainder of the issues have to do with, uh, utilities, that's water, sewer, and so forth, and corrections, and bear in mind the fact that this, the airfield itself and the utilities under the ground, uh, date way back in time, and so it's common that we find issues like this that we have to address.
Okay.
Staff recommends approval.
This is a action item?
Move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item twenty-three, consideration and action to authorize amendment number twenty and twenty-one to the general engineering contract with HNTB for taxiway G reconstruction at the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Mayor Protem, members of the commission, this is a proposed amendment to the umbrella contract that we have with HNTB, the amendment would provide for engineering, both design as well as, uh, construction supervision of a thirteen million dollar project designed to reconstruct taxiway G at the airport. We anticipate, and we would ask, that the city commission approve this subject to FAA approval of that thirteen million dollar grant, we do anticipate and very much look forward to that in the space of about a week and a half.
Okay, this is an action item?
So move?
Second.
Subject to FAA approval, a motion made by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twenty-four.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Item twenty-four, consideration and action on a long-term lease with the Catholic Diocese of Brownsville for property currently utilized as the Boys and Girls Club of the Brownsville Programs.
Honorable Mayor Protem and city commissioners, uh, before you is a lease agreement, uh, that would, uh, with the, uh, Roman Catholic Diocese of Brownsville for the, uh, property as we know as the Boys Club, this will be a, a fifty-year lease, uh, one dollar a year, in the lease agreement, there's the terms and, uh, conditions regarding, uh, insurance, et cetera.
Okay.
Mayor, I have some questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hernandez.
Okay, um, Mr. Goza, if we agree to the terms of this lease, this property becomes a leasehold improvement of the city of Brownsville for fifty years, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir, we'd be leasing the, uh, the property and the building that sits on the property.
So we basically have control, total control of that building for the next fifty years?
Uh, to the extent that, as a, as a leasing, yes, sir, the, uh, diocese will continue to own it, uh, the city will be responsible for utilities, insurance, uh, there won't be taxes, but the idea is that the city would, uh, physically maintain the building and lease the building from the diocese and help to physically oversee the administration of the Boys and Girls Club, which has operated in there historically.
The diocese owns land and the building, or just land?
By default, they own both, because of the fact that it's their property.
We're, we're leasing from the diocese what, what they own, uh, and, and are gaining by that the ability to, to utilize the building and the property and the facilities there.
Is it, is this basically a mere lease of what the Boys Club had with, uh, the diocese?
Uh, this actual lease format was, uh, based on a newer lease agreement that they had used with Ozenon Center, uh, that was the starting point for this lease, but we extended the term, uh, to the fifty-year period and changed a few other provisions, but that was...
The reason I ask, Mr. Goza, that's, it's very important, we started this conversation about a year ago, the Boys Club Board, that we would, uh, basically hold, uh, or let them continue to have Boys Club activities in that, in this building, we need to access monies from four B, Commissioner, and HUD monies that are available for leasehold, that's why I asked you, it was a leasehold improvement, because this building does need, you know, roofing and other, uh, general maintenance right now, and there is money available, so it's really important that we control this building for the next fifty years, that way we can access those monies, I don't want it to, from there to be, uh, all of a sudden, well, I'm sorry, no, because of, of this particular item A, you can't do this.
Well, we have a separate, we have a separate agreement with the Boys and Girls Club, which their board has approved except for just one minor change, a technical change, and that would allow us to, to step into their shoes essentially and utilize the buildings as they have been, uh, to operate the Boys and Girls Club, it's my understanding as well, that, um, from, uh, Representative four B, that, uh, funding was approved previously for the Boys and Girls Club to make improvements on this, on these buildings, which, um, I believe the city will then step into their shoes and presumably be able to, to do the same improvements, the same, and built, to the same buildings only, uh, through the city, as opposed to having the funding go directly to the Boys and Girls Club.
Status of Boys Club right now, they do have an active board and a representative?
Yes, sir, uh, Alex Barretta continues to be their executive director, Michael Bennett is now the director of their board, they met, uh, I believe, last week and considered the agreement that we had proposed at that time, uh, for us to, to step in and to start maintaining the buildings and trying to oversee, uh, the physical, uh, accommodations for, for, uh, the Boys and Girls Club.
I'm proud to have them in Southmost right now at Gonzalez Park, but we would like for them to return to, to their building and resume activities for the whole city.
Well, I think that, uh, this is a collaborative effort, I think some of the commission members spoke to different members, uh, of the Boys and Girls Club in an effort to keep them going, and to, together, kind of, overcome the difficulties that they've had in operating the programs, so this was a, kind of, a joint effort really on the part of the diocese, who's been very generous to allow us to step in like this, and also cooperative effort of the Boys and Girls Club, uh, as they continue to try to operate the programs, but with the city being able to at least maintain the buildings, and hopefully with help from the four B funds.
Ben, I would like to motion to approve. Ben, how soon will we enter into this agreement and actually be able to open up the doors for the Boys and Girls of this community?
Well, this agreement will be presented to the, to the diocese, uh, and as soon as they sign, we would, we would take, uh, participating in those programs and that building immediately, um, that would answer your question, I just have one, one correction...
And one question, I think the real concern is, I think everybody here agrees, that we need to continue, the Boys Club needs to continue in that location.
Exactly.
And we get the program going now, summertime, you know, we made a promise a year ago, that was one of the campaign promises I was involved in, about this youth issue, and, uh, it's taken a year, and we finally got to that point, I wanna make sure, that's why I asked you, Mr. Goza, that we're covered, as far as making the leasehold improvements and fixing the ACs and the roofs, and doing the things we have to do, and to start the programs as quick as possible.
That's correct, and, and this agreement actually, uh, goes back to June first, um, starting June first, so as soon as it's executed, we would be there. Just one, uh, correction, uh, Mr. Goza, I think, uh, on page two, I think it's a little typo, it says lesser, and the payment utility should be less E, so, uh, so we can include that correction, uh, I recommend that, uh, this agreement be approved.
Commissioner Atkinson?
I'd like to move to approve this.
We have a motion to approve with, along with those corrections, with, uh, we have a motion to approve along with those corrections by Commissioner Atkinson and second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ben, let's make sure that we're able to open up those doors soon to those children.
And we'll submit a corrected copy of that, those typographical errors to the city secretary.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Item twenty-five?
Item twenty, item twenty-five, consideration and action to award a contract for hangar demolition and asbestos abatement at the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Honorable Mayor Protem and commissioners, at the request of our aviation director Larry Brown, the purchasing department solicited formal bids for this project, uh, these bids were received and opened on May nineteenth, we received a total of nine bids for this demolition project, I think Robert has some photos of what we're going to demolish there at the airport. Uh, we submitted the bids to the project consultants for review, and at this time, uh, staff recommends consideration action to award a contract for the hangar demolition and asbestos abatement to, at Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport to Alamo One Demolition, Inc. of San Antonio, their base bid was a hundred fifty-one thousand eighty-eight dollars, uh, we have nothing remarkable to report regarding this bid process, and the engineer's cost estimate was two hundred seventy-seven thousand, so I guess that's a remarkable aspect, that we were under by a hundred and twenty-six, so...
Okay, commissioners, this is an action item? Okay, Commissioners, there's an action item?
So, move?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-six, consideration and action to award a contract for the demolition of condemned houses for the Planning and Community Development Department.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, at the request of our Planning and Community Development Director, Mr. Ben Medina, the Purchasing Department solicited bids for this project. These bids were received on May twelfth. We received two bids for this particular project. Our recommendation to you this evening is consideration and action to award a contract for demolition of ten condemned houses for Planning and Community Development Department to R. Martinez Halling, a Brownsville firm, which was the low-responsive bidder for the total price of thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. This is funded through community block grant funds.
Commissioner, action item?
Would approve?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-seven?
Item twenty-seven, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of four vertical one-stage oil-lubricated propeller pumps for the Garden Park Stormwater Improvements Project.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, I'm sure you all are familiar with this project. Originally, it was bid as one large project, and it was way, way, way over budget, so we broke it up into components, refined each of those components, and we have successfully brought those individual components back to you under budget. This being one of the last components, it's the actual pump mechanisms, and perhaps Robert can put a graphic up for you. These are the pumps that will be installed in the soon-to-be-built pump house in this location. We went through the bid process. Bids were received on June first. We received a total of two bids, submitted them to the consulting engineer, and our recommendation to you this evening is we award the contract for the purchase and installation of these four vertical one-stage oil-lubricated propeller pumps at the Garden Park Stormwater Improvement Project to Balch Machine Company, which is a local concern. The amount is three hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, and we've worked with Balch and Impala Pumps and have a successful relationship there.
Is this also CDBG?
This is also funded, yeah, it should be.
I move to approve, and I'm excited about this, and I'm looking forward to getting rid of all the water that accumulates.
We have a motion by Commissioner Arroyo, and a second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I just want to add that I know that proper drainage, you know, is of the utmost importance in this community, and I'm delighted to know that the Public Works Department, through Mr. Carlos Nunez, will be constructing the pumping station, pumping stations where these pumps will be located, so it's going to be a great deal for everyone.
They have good experience with that. They built a pump house at Impala, and it's been very successful.
Yep. Thank you very much. Item twenty-eight?
Item twenty-eight, consideration and action to award a contract for the thirty-first year Community Development Block Grant Street Paving and Drainage Improvements Project for West Tenth Street and West Seventeenth Street.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, again, at the request of our Planning and Community Development Director Ben Medina, and our Engineering Director Carlos Lastra, the Purchasing Department solicited formal seal bids for this project. These bids were received and opened on May thirtieth. A total of three bids were received and tabulated by the project consulting engineer, James Rose of Mahian Rose. Our recommendation to you this evening is consideration and action to award a contract for thirty-first year CDBG Street Paving and Drainage Improvements Project for West Tenth Street, West Seventeenth Street to G and T Paving, Brownsville, Texas, low-responsive bidder, the amount is three hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Action item? We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Kalapa, I just want to thank the Purchasing Department and the City Secretary's Office. I know they work diligently to expedite this, this project, and once these streets are done, it's going to greatly improve the neighborhood, so thank you guys very much.
Our pleasure.
Greatly needed.
Item twenty-nine?
Item twenty-nine, consideration and action to award a contract for the thirty-first year CDBG Street Paving and Drainage Improvements Project for Daisy Drive, Xenia Street, and Gardenia Street.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, again, at the request of our Planning and Community Development Director Ben Medina and Engineering Director Carlos, Carlos Lastra, the Purchasing Department solicited formal seal bids for this project. These bids were received on May thirtieth. A total of three bids were received and tabulated by the project's consulting engineer, Alfredo G. Hernandez, who's here with us this evening, I believe. Our recommendation is that we have City Commission consideration and action to award a contract for thirty-first year CDBG Street Paving and Drainage Improvement Projects for Daisy Drive, Xenia Street, Gardenia Street to R and R Paving, San Benito, the low-responsive bidder. The amount there is eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Action item?
Mayor Pro Tem, before we approve this, I'd like to make a statement to the people of our community, pretending these are streets in Southmost. Por favor, que nos tengan paciencia en la construcción de las calles. Ahorita con el precio de petróleo, está muy difícil para comprar el asfalto. Y cuando se está construyendo un expressway, al mismo tiempo en nuestra ciudad, es muy difícil que la ciudad pueda comprar el asfalto porque muchas veces le dan prioridad a ese contrato que se está haciendo en el expressway. Y eso es un problema con el que estamos batallando. Comenzamos a componer calles, y al mismo tiempo, verdad, el asfalto sube el precio del asfalto, sale fuera de lo que tenemos en presupuesto, y es difícil para comprar el asfalto, y por eso muchas veces se detienen ciertos proyectos. Ahora, en muchas calles que se están componiendo de nuestra ciudad, también son calles viejas, tienen tubería vieja, necesitan que entrar los ingenieros, necesitan que entraran los contratistas, para componer la tubería en esas calles, y por eso muchas veces se detiene el proyecto. No son excusas que hacemos por parte de la ciudad, sino que simplemente son cosas que se tienen que hacer, que se tienen que preparar, y les pedimos al mismo tiempo un poco de paciencia, y a su debido tiempo va a llegar todo y se van a cumplir estas calles que estamos programando.
Commissioner, and talking with the city staff, I understand that they've said that these streets haven't been worked on in the last fifteen years, so I want to appreciate, you know, I appreciate city staff for identifying these streets and helping for a ride for the reconstruction.
Commissioner Longoria, can you repeat that in English?
Maybe fifty years.
No, I'm just kidding.
What?
Fifty years, maybe never.
Maybe never, yeah. They told me fifteen, maybe it was fifty. Maybe I missed, I didn't hear him right. Do we have a motion, Commissioner Longoria? That's a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty?
Item thirty, consideration and action to award a contract for the lease purchase of two trucks and a contract for rent to own of two trailers for the Public Works Department.
Put it together right?
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, we've been working on this project for a long time. Ivan's going to give you the rundown on it. He's our fleet administrator.
Mr. Welker?
Good evening.